I have a letter of resignation from Mayor Graham Nico.
From who?
From the mayor.
Okay.
I'm gonna see that everyone gets a copy of this letter, it's pretty lengthy.
Where's the letter?
It's right here. I'm gonna make copies up if we leave and can you have it?
Okay, thank you.
Would the chair would entertain a motion to accept this resignation?
I make a motion, we accept the resignation.
I second. Peggy?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Ralph? Alright. You've done a lot of nice things for this town, I feel bad. But some of these gives no real reason for that, so...
There should be another paper here, somewhere.
Right there, I'll put your all this information.
This one's off here, maybe?
Okay.
I'm gonna have this solicitor come up here and swear in the name of the mayor. Unless I'll just kinda roll along like we are for one night.
Might as well go ahead and say sorry, you know?
Yeah. It's all about for the bills and everything.
We have a Bible.
I don't think that we can have a Bible.
Really? We have a Bible.
Do we actually have that conversation, or what?
Okay.
Well, they're good, but no.
Are you sure?
I will.
Repeat after me. I, Kathy Smallwood.
I, Kathy Smallwood.
You hereby solemnly swear.
You hereby solemnly swear.
I shall support the Constitution of the United States.
That I shall support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I shall faithfully.
I shall faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially discharge the duties of the mayor.
And impartially discharge the duties of the mayor.
For the village of New Garets, Ohio.
For the village of New Garets, Ohio.
She is tall now.
For the term ending December 31st, 2019.
For the term ending December 31st, 2019.
To reject my appointment.
To reject my appointment. Alright, I took the liberty as president of council to swear Luther in earlier, as I knew we would have to when we did not. So he has already been swearing. And we wanna welcome him to council.
Welcome.
Welcome. Hoping that everyone's had a chance to look at their meetings, go entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the February meetings.
I'll make a motion to let back, accept the minutes of February.
Second.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Luther?
Restain.
Restain.
Ralph?
Yes.
Means our acceptance. If everyone has had a chance to look at the warrants list and the payable time sheets, we would entertain a motion to approve the warrants and payable timesheets as presented.
Motion made.
I second. Mary Jane?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve transfer of interest earned to the respective funds.
So moved.
Second.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the operating transfer to the police department, monthly transfer?
Yes. I'm in second.
Ralph? Mary Jane?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the matching grant funds, the grant matching funds, excuse me, funds that we use to match our grants in the street department fund, move it to that.
Motion made.
Second. Mary Jane?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
This season is not here, is John here?
No.
No, we're right along. Rick? Here for the Northern Northwest Fire Department.
Yes, I just wanted to kinda give a little review view. Uh, we're still on host the Central Western Firemen's Association, and that'll be July 19th, 20th, and 21st. Mainly, uh, the 19th is kind of a setup day. The 20th and the 21st, which is a Friday and a Saturday. That's mainly when we have competitions. We'll have a Friday evening, we'll have some different competitions. Uh, there will be like a Queens contest on Friday, and there's a few competitions. Our main competition will be on Saturday. What I'm kinda asking of the council, to kinda let you know and ask for permission, we'd like to use the school grounds, we'd like to possibly close off Spring Street from Walnut to Cherry, and I understand that possibly there might be some work down Cherry. And I'm just asking for a little extra, we'd possibly like to have on Main Street down to Hutton Street. We're trying to get it worked out, so we have everything at the school grounds, if we're allowed to use them, and mainly from Walnut Street down to Main Street. So, we got some people from Central Western coming in April the 14th, or 14th, excuse me, around 7 o'clock, so that we kinda go with them, what we wanna lay out and everything. And I just wanted to let the council know, I'll go to the Board of Public Affairs and talk with them about a few things. We don't wanna, we got what we call a water ball on Saturday, we'll set up two courts. And that may use quite a bit of water, I mean, we're not gonna drain the tower, but we may use our share of water, so we just wanna see what the water system does. We're talking about bringing in some tankers from other fire departments, so that we can supplement that, so that we're not causing any problems there. Uh, we're gonna have a few vendors, there's not gonna be a whole lot of vendors, it's hard telling how many people we're gonna have. The Central Western's not like it was when we had it years ago. Most everybody is up north anymore, there's not too many departments in front of them. Uh, we will try to advertise it through the radios and some, possibly we can get something in the flight in or the register herald. Uh, what I'm hoping to do is get some organizations, we're gonna promote the different businesses here in town, as far as the restaurants, the gas stations, um, like the Legion, and where people can go. We're not gonna have a whole lot of vendors, 'cause here again, we don't know how many people we're gonna have. This, this, as far as vendors, we may have three or four vendors. Right now, we're trying to do that kinda locally. Uh, we've talked to the Booster Club, the National, and trying to see if they'll come in and wanna do some stuff. We got a couple other people coming in. Because we don't wanna get too many people here, 'cause you just can't promise them how much we're gonna do. And that's where we're gonna kinda promote the different places here in town to eat. It's not gonna be that far away from where we're at, if they got the time. And so, you know, here again, we're gonna talk with the people that are there on Spring Street from Walnut down. The one house on the corner, I don't think it'd be a problem, 'cause they can get out, they can park on Walnut Street. Uh, the other two houses, the next two houses down, it's got an alley between them to go back over to Walnut, or go back over to Hutton. Now, the one house is down there towards the bends, uh, coast, the basketball court, they don't have a way out. Right now, Central Western would like to set up this water ball on the 19th, 'cause it'll take a little while. We'll have two courts set up, we'll take three dump trucks, and it takes time to get it all set up, so that they don't have to hustle. So that's where I'm asking whether or not that'll be a problem, 'cause we will have to shut the street down once we get this water ball set up. And like I said, we're trying to do it right now between Walnut and Main Street. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, sure. Obviously, this is open to the public. And you have a safety coordinator?
Yes.
It's, uh, that will be in charge of any type of safety that's, you know, that's needed, because something like this, you know, you're, of course, if it's open to the public, you're gonna have kids everywhere and stuff like that. And, uh, I'm just a grandparent with a lot of grandkids here in town, and safety's always been a concern of mine.
Safety is number one with Central Western. I'm kinda like the chairman right now, I got a committee of my own, I have about, about four, six people that will be helping me out. Hopefully, most of the department will be doing that. And it is a concern, especially water ball. If you're not on the court to shoot, you're not really supposed to be around, 'cause there is some cables, they get very tight and everything, and they watch that very much. And, uh, some of the other competitions, most of the other competitions, we're hoping to do on the basketball court, or up the driveway, where it's paved right now. Uh, that's why we got the Central Western people coming in in April the 14th, to let them see whether or not we can do it in that area. 'Cause we're trying to condense it down, and try to keep it so that people could still watch it, be around, but yet they're not probably up close.
Sounds good.
And, uh, also, just to let you know, is that we will have some people, what we call a yearbook, and this is what Central Western does every year, people will be going around asking for either donations or businesses wanna get in the yearbook. Um, like a quarterly page is like, I think it's like forty dollars, and half a page is like eighty dollars, and it goes on up to about a hundred and twenty if it's black and white. If you want a whole page in color, it's like eight hundred and fifty dollars. So we will be going around, and it's not just new pairs that we're going to, because this is kinda the fundraiser for the host department to make some money. We're gonna go in Richmond area, we're gonna go in Eaton area, um, and probably up in the Madison area, kinda surrounding areas, so we can get quite a bit.
But they're pounding here before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're looking at it.
Also, also, one other thing is, one other thing is, we don't know for sure if we're going to parade, 'cause I guess the possibility Jerry Street might be tore up, and there was some question whether or not we had a parade, if we can get the traffic around, or if it's gonna have to be stolen. Here again, I don't know how many departments are coming, it may be a small parade, I don't know if we do that, we're just talking about that. Uh, so, everything's just kinda up in the air right now. We probably won't know better until it comes about the end of June, or something like that, knowing about how many departments we might be getting. Any other questions?
Basically, the area that you're gonna use is the same area that we do for the after.
Yes.
Basically, we're close.
And I will begin with the chamber, and talking about them, with them a little bit, about electricity, how they got it, how much it might run, because we'll have to have electricity for a few things up there. Um, we will have to have a possibly water hook up for our vendors, and, uh, well, like I said, there shouldn't be too many vendors, so that shouldn't be a problem then.
We should almost give us some good suggestions about how we should do all those things, we need them too. Um, the only thing concerns me is one home that has no way to get in and out. There can be a combination that can be made with that somehow.
Well...
Well, they can go down the alley.
Well, they don't have the alley.
Oh, oh, is it the one there where the fence is out?
Right.
So you're gonna...
Well, they'll have to park the car down the street and walk to the car.
Yes, and I will, I will go down and talk to them here in the near future, just kinda explain what's going on and everything, and see what they got to say, and then we'll try to work with them, you know?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the fire department to have their, what do you call it?
Central Western conference.
Central Western conference on...
July, it's actually, the conference is gonna be the 20th, 21st, but the 19th will be setting.
Okay, from the 19th to the 21st?
Right.
My second. Mary Jane?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Thank you. But maybe you'll have a paper, we can get ready, just go to the man, what you're gonna use, what you're gonna use, and all that, and...
Well, right now, we hopefully will use the parking lot, both shelters, uh, pretty much from the parking lot all the way around.
I do have one more question. Does, will you coordinate this with the, or does the council coordinate this with the police department to...
The paperwork that gets still now, um, so the police get copy of that paperwork, so that they know, you know, if there will be a parade, and if there won't be, and, and all that information will...
And I have, I have talked with him just a little bit about some, possibly whether or not we need some of our police up there, huh?
Yeah.
And everything, so, it's a matter of whether or not, you know, how things could work out there. And I know he's kinda tied on his budget, so, um, that's something I have to, Central Western, I'll talk with them about, and see what all they want. We may have some of our personnel to kinda make sure things are taken care of, that nobody's messing around. Okay, thank you.
Okay, be careful. Mr. Smallwood's next on the agenda, I don't know, under the circumstances, whether he makes the call, or may not. I'm looking at our solicitor to ask.
I don't have any objection to that. Uh, the council aware of my position at this time on my account, which is, uh, I'll let him say his speak, so if somebody else...
Fine.
They probably heard it. And this, for the new council member, may not be aware what's going on here, there's a situation at our house, 425 South Spring Street, with storm sewer, and we've been dealing with this, seems like a lifetime, but I think actually since January, July. Anyhow, I've got some information that I'd like to share with everyone tonight, I'm not asking anyone to make a decision or anything like that, it's just information that I acquired. In the minutes, on December 13th, there was a motion, and adopted to relocate the South Spring Street storm sewer, which crossed the Smallwood property. And then stated that it would look to having an engineer examine my property, damage concerns, and so on and so forth. To this point, we've never had anyone come down and visit to my house, an engineer to that house. Now, that's been two months. So I took it upon myself to go down, and I had some correspondence with the county engineer office. In construction, you fill out a request for information, and we did that with paperwork, and sent them information. And it responded back with the questions that I had. And then I, over the last month, I developed other questions, so I personally went down there myself, and that was... Anyhow, so I talked with an engineer down there. Next door, I stated right, what I did is, I met with two representatives from the office down there. And I'm gonna give you a card with the gentleman's name. And he told me that he was somewhat prepared with my situation, because he had spoken on the phone to a representative from the village. He didn't know the person's name, but he did say he thought I was the person that was going to do the work. I assume it was Jim, but that's irrelevant, it's fine. So, you know, I discussed what he, what the situation was down there, and so on and so forth. And he told me that he had discussed this with the village. He recommended that they would, that they go with a new storm line that would circumvent my home, and run all this storm from Lincoln Street down to Easement, where they have Elhauser power lines, and tie into a new main that was put in several years ago. And that, that means a 24-inch line. And he recommended that they build with an 18-inch, you know, don't reduce it down any from what's up there at this, they maintain. Maintain 18 inches, and put it in like, you know, they've stated in other meetings. He also told me that he directed them to repair the damages, and replace the damaged tile that I have at my house with an 8-inch line. Because once all that volume is gone, I only need a 8-inch line to take care of what our needs are. He stated to me that the village is obligated to maintain storm sewer service, including gutters, downspouts, and possible runoff from the backyard at 425 South Spring Street. Once this new ser- or, sorry, storm sewer service has been established, it cannot be taken, I'm sorry. He restated that. Once storm sewer service has been established at my house for a period of years, it cannot be taken away from it. Okay, now, the gentleman's name is James Simmons. I asked the clerk to acknowledge it and make this paper that you received it, and make a copy of the memories of myself. So, basically, he's telling me that the village would be obligated to do an estimation around my house, investigate, see what's washed out, present, whatever the damage is, it's the village's responsibility to prepare. Plus, they have to make me back home again, as far as having a place to put my downspouts in to go to the main alley street. The reason I'm bringing this up tonight, I know it's an awkward situation, but I couldn't wait any longer, 'cause I've been dealing with this since June. And...
When you say downspouts, you mean like downspouts off your cars and so forth?
Yes, for people who, uh, are welcome to come down and visit at any time. My parents built a house there in 1947. They put a pipe from the backyard of their property beside the house, out to the street. Around 1950, or only 850. These dates may not be completely accurate, but it's close enough. Short version is, that provided down a place to drown their, uh, drain their downspouts. Plus, in the backyard, Lincoln Street was undeveloped at that time, it was just a hillside there. So, in the summertime, they'd get a large runoff from that hillside to the backyard, down the driveway. So he put this 12-inch storm line, concrete storm line, in there to drain the downspouts in to get rid of the root water. And then any excess water that was in the backyard. He then built a garage over top of it. And what he did was, he put an opening into the garage, which I know sounds funny, but this is 1948, 49. It wouldn't be this today, but in case there was a sort of, a tremendous amount of water coming down there, it would flow into the garage and then down the driveway. At the end of the driveway, there was a grate there. He had put a board in place, concrete wall head through there. Across his property and the neighbor's property, which are adjoining driveways, match each other. So at his expense, he put this caulk in there, so that you could drive your vehicles in now. Then after Lincoln Street was developed, it was decided that they would tie into his existing tile, which wasn't back at the end of the property line, was inside his property at least 50 feet, maybe 40. So, they tied a 18-inch storm line from Lincoln Street into this 12-inch line since 1956 or so. So all these years, all that water's been running down beside our house into this pipe, into the street, storm sewer. The summer, we established that there's, we, I thought, personally, I thought there was a blockage in there. So the village came down and responded. Eventually, we got a camera up in there to see what was wrong, and if there's broken tile up near the house. So it has to be repaired. We're getting water in the basement, and we're getting water in the garage. The sidewalk has sunk down now. So, until it's escalated out, we have no knowledge of what, hopefully, there's not much that's down there. What my fear was, what I've been trying to get this thing accelerated for, is because I didn't want water to get in against my basement wall and freeze in the wintertime when it gets below zero, and shove in my block wall. Because the earth around that is part of destruction integrity of the basement. So anyhow, I just wanted people to know what was going on, that they had talked to this individual, and he said he'll stand behind his statement, if you're welcome to call him if you want to, and talk to him. And he says that once you have service, we've been, he's been supplying people with service regardless of if the pipe ends, start with it. It's your obligation to fulfill that. Any other questions about it? I know we're doing this on Luther here, and you have to put a group by him before I leave, but...
Yeah, I know where 425 is, up on Spring Street?
Yes.
Yeah, from left going right, yes.
So again, like I say, with the unfortunate situation that we're in, I'm not asking anyone to take any action or anything, but, uh...
So the problem you're having is getting somebody, or getting the town or the village or somebody to fix the tile?
Yes. So the, the village is, I've never been told this officially, this is hearsay, and what I can gather from minutes. I happen to be very close to the, a council member, and we don't talk politics or anything. I never asked her to tell me anything. But anyhow, they're going to put a storm line in where it should've been put in at least 10 years ago, when this last storm line was put in down Spring Street. It should've been put in here, that one, nothing against it. We're draining a city block up there, down to a 12-inch pipe beside my house. It was never designed to hold that volume of water. And till it pretty good was its last 60 years. It's a concrete pipe tile. And then over the years, it's, it had cracks in it, freezing and falling, and now there's a chunk out of it by my house. Up in the backyard, close to where they tie into, there's additional breakage up there as well. At this point, I don't have any ground singing or anything.
Which is the water's flooding the ground, and then flooding into your basement, and so forth.
Yes. Now, we've never had any water in the basement before, except one time on the other side of the house where it went in, went the well. But I did everything I could around the house to make sure that it wasn't coming from there, before I called the village about this. But I think I actually called them in June, but I'm gonna say July just for the record. Anyhow, what I'm asked to do is, how we didn't get it just the other night, I don't know. But normally, when it rains that hard, we get such a volume down through there, that it clearly blows through that hole, or holes, we don't know them, but the camera didn't go so far, that it got stuck through the drain box. Maybe additional tile, I don't know. The little water through there at that force, where she could have erled out around it, leaving sidewalks suspended there, that's why it sunk down. It will go over by my basement wall, going all the way down the basement wall, under the basement wall, above the foundation, and coming to the basement. It's not coming through cracks or anything through the basement wall. Anyhow, it's obviously a mess, every time it does it, and you got local issues you gotta deal with, and everything else. Anyhow, I'll be out, if anyone wants to come down there and visit, at their convenience, just call me and come down. I'll share the current situation I'm up against.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of stay on that subject for a minute.
Sure.
Hey, hey, can I ask one more question first?
Sure.
Go ahead. Has any council member, does any council member know about this conversation with this gentleman?
What, yeah, you mean, which one?
Jimmy. I mean, the assumption of Jimmy talking to Mr. Simmons, is that...
No, the assumption that he just said to them that they need to fix this issue.
To my knowledge, I'm not aware that Mr. Simmons told the village that we needed to take care of that situation.
Okay.
No, I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
Because...
Have we gotten a ladder or anything, or anything for him?
No, he told me he didn't.
Oh, he wasn't part of the data?
It was, well, he wasn't asked.
Oh, okay.
He had a phone conversation from, I think, I mean, it's, it's irrelevant, though. And Jimmy brought that information to somebody, I'm a little... But that's why I'm asking a question, if any, I personally talked to Jimmy about... But that's why I'm asking the question, if any lie, I personally talked to Jimmy about something. Temporary fixing of it, you know, once the pipe has been moved from this present location to the new location that we've already approved to do, which we're going to do that material, we'll be here Wednesday to move it. But as to Mr. Simmons telling the village what we should and should not do, I've not been in conversation with Mr. Simmons about that. Well, Jimmy had said something to me about different things we could do, or could not, we could do, that could be done to maybe help set the situation out. As the council members that are new members on this situation, the, to my knowledge, the village has never been proven to be at fault on this. Because I don't think, Steve, that anybody has said when, how far back, or whatever, the decision was made to use the line that goes through your property as the one from Lincoln Street. And that's fine. The problem is, Ralph, the line is the village's line, I know that, and part of it's your own personal downspout runoff through your property also. The city solicitor may be able to get involved in this too. I don't know where the village's responsibility is or is not in this, but we're trying to do...
Maybe we'll never bring Mr. Simmons to this.
Yeah, and I'd like to talk to Mr. Simmons also, but anyway. It is a bad issue, and I agree with you that it is, and we're trying to work a way for a solution for everybody. We are going to put in a new storm sewer, which is going to eliminate a lot of the volume of water that you're getting. Now, going back to the fact of repairing the damage and that kind of stuff, I don't know where we, where our responsibility of the village is to do that. That's fine, but the problem is, Ralph, somebody needs to make this decision promptly. It's been going on six months. The issue has probably been going on for 60 years. Well, it just happened to develop at this time with other limitations. And as far as I've been, you know, I'm trying to work as best with it as we can, a step at a time. And we've approved moving the storm sewer away from your house with the volume of water. Then we can get back to the repair or whatever we have to do if it's our responsibility to dig up your yard or your driveway or your garage, and how far back that responsibility goes, I have no idea. I need to know more about that myself. To see where, to see where our responsibility is on that, along with the city solicitor, to see what our responsibility is. But we're working, we're working on the issue as best we can, and I know you've got a problem, and we're moving forward with it as quickly as we can. I know you don't feel like we are, but I feel like we are.
Well, no, that's fine.
And I don't know, from the village councilman's point of view, where our responsibility lies to go in there, turn your driveway up, turn your garage up, turn your yard up, to repair what's broken in there. Okay, I know those...
Because I'm new, and I don't really know what's going on, Steve. Has the town, or the council, or has anybody in the village sent anybody, like an engineer out there, to see, you know, the damage and what's caused this damage, and, you know, and...
What the village did in November, after a November 8th rain, again, this was told about, and I'm gonna say July, if I can prove that, about the situation. Jimmy came down, looked at it, then the next time it rained, Ralph actually came down and looked at it. So, I've been dealing with this for a long, long time. Okay, finally, they decided that they would put a camber up in there in the cabin. They didn't get the camera there until the middle of November. And again, my biggest fear is water accumulating against my basement wall and shoving down wall with freezing tall. So, here we are, March, and all I've, no one has ever told me or contacted me and told me what they were going to do to start with. All I get is what I can read from minutes and things like that. Okay, so now they're going to establish, which was my suggestion too, to run it from Ed's house straight down to tie it into the main with an 18-inch line to hold the line. That circumvents my house. So, but, that helps, I mean, that has to be done, no question about it. Seems to be the disagreement here that it's your line, it's broken, it's causing damage to my facility, that you can't tell it until you expose it, what it's for city damage. There may not be any at all, other than the sidewalk sunk down, I don't know. But I seem to be getting stonewalled here from all that.
The only reason I ask you a question because I don't know that much about it, but in order maybe to help you some, is, I'm not, I don't know who's qualified here. Is Jimmy qualified, is Ralph qualified, okay? Do you need a qualified engineer to go out there and look at this and say, hey?
Well, when I start to say, the camera is recorded. The village or somebody has a recording of that pipe that you legally should be able to look at yourself. But the problem is, the camera could only go so far from both directions, from the Spring Street direction and from Lincoln Street that type area. Because there's voids and broken tile in between, and the camera could be in sync.
Okay, I think we've reached an end pass here, right? Thank you, thank you, all your questions.
Next, Steve.
Hi. Thank you.
First thing with the statement, thank you for having me. First thing I have is I have some quotes for you for the tree removal on Cherry Street. And Jimmy was kind enough to work on this for me. We got three quotes, one is from Greg Stevens. He's the one that's done...
No, that's your...
He's done a lot of your work in the past. We also got, and his quote is for $9,150, he's for 27 trees. Basically, he would come in and cut his stump off about 6 feet, you know, like we have in the past. And then when the contractor comes in, put in a new curb and sidewalk, he would actually pick up the stump without moving. Then we also have a quote from Tree Masters for $11,500, and he also contacted Fix Waters for $28.8. The cost of the tree removal is covered under the grant, so it'll be part of the grant application or grant fund. We also have to have the trees down by April the 15th because we have federal grant money in this, and because of that, we have to be considerate of the Indiana FAT and their roosting period. And their roosting period starts on April the 15th and goes through September 1st. So, we have to have the trees down by the 15th of April. So, that's kind of why we brought this to you today, so that we can make a decision and get that taken care of. But again, it is part of the grant, so the grant money will pay for the tree removal.
Susan, I just, I have a question about liability insurance.
Yes, they will have to provide insurance to you once we decide to go for choosing.
I have a question. Why would you want to leave tree stumps?
Basically, what happens is, is it's a lot cheaper for them to just come in and cut it off and take the tree down, then when the contractor comes in, the action does the street work. They'll take it out, because they have the excavator there, and they're gonna dig out all that curb anyway. And so, it really saves you money because if we put the tree removal into the contract with the contract, and he's gonna sub it to somebody and add 15% onto it, so you're gonna pay more money for it if you put it in your contract versus contracting it directly for one. Two, we're not gonna have the contract in place by April the 15th, so that's gonna present a problem, which means you have to wait clear until September to take the trees down. We don't really wanna do that because we need to do the work this summer. And then, thirdly, the tree people don't, unless they come in and grind out the stump, they don't really have a way to remove the stump, and we don't need them to grind out the stump. That's an expensive way to get rid of the stump when we can use the excavating equipment to basically just dig it out and make it rid of it. So, what'll happen is, when we get the contract for the construction piece, in that, it will include the excavation of the stumps, which is a real benign cost at that point, so. Make sense?
Yes.
Okay, and that's how we've done Cherry, that was in Washington, they were all...
Yeah, but there's some around town that's been ordered to be cut down, and the stump's still there, and now the trees all grow.
Yeah, you have to have a grain of stump out if you're gonna do that.
Yeah, I know, I know.
If you're not gonna take the stump out, well, yeah. Other questions?
Nothing? Everyone had time to look at all three bills?
Yes. I make a motion that we go with Greg Stevens at $9,150.
They're seconded down.
Mary Day?
Yes.
Peggy? No? Luther?
Yes.
Ralph?
Okay. The next thing I want to talk to you about, I was going to do in the Spring Street Bridge project. I've been aware of an opportunity that we may have through the state that we could potentially apply for some grant money to take over your shares of the project, which is about $80,000.
Wow.
So, I mean, there's no for sure thing there, there's just an opportunity. But in order to pursue that, I just need you to make a motion to allow me to submit a pre-application so that the state can review it and decide whether or not that will last to submit an application for the funds. We'll use the ODOT money that you have, obviously, as the match, and because that's a big piece compared to the small piece that we need, although it's a big piece to you guys, that's, I think, why there's some interest. So, I just need a motion from council to allow me to submit a pre-app to the state to review it for consideration.
I make a motion that Susan do that pre-app.
And there's no cost to you for it, so.
I second it.
Mary Day?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
The last thing I have, though, is just more of an update. We, I have received some information that the capital bill has been drafted. I've looked at a draft copy of it, and there is a funding line I have in there for the park. At this point, it's $250,000. So, it's yet to be determined where that will end up. It still has to go through the congressional approvals, but hopefully, we'll be able to keep that there and then be able to build on that, try to make a change up there in the park and truly have, you know, a really place for everybody to be. So, does everybody keep your fingers crossed?
Please do. And then you just... Three towers smaller.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, we also want to remember that the village itself has agreed to put up $150,000 to help clear that away up there, so.
And as we...
That would be something to be looking at as far as borrowing that money or whatever we have to do.
What'll happen is, that bill will continue to be with the Congress. They anticipate it'll be approved probably in April or May. Then that, that money is basically appropriated through the 2019 budget, which begins on July 1st of 2018. In their budget years, kind of half this year, half next year. You'll have until June of 2020 to spend the money. So, we've got some time to try to use it to leverage some other funds, to get some donations, to seek out some other sources, something like that. So, just because we have, you know, we get the money, and we have to do something right away if we want to use it to try to leverage some other funds, to try to maybe, you know, limit how much the village has to put forward to try to take care of it. And for the people that are new, maybe I'll kind of explain. As you know, the village received the old school property, it was donated to the village by the person that owned it because they really weren't taking care of it, it's not fair. And so, basically, as you know, we applied for some grant money, and we built the two shelters that were there and put the walking trail in. And the big master plan picture there is to basically get rid of the school building. There's been an asbestos survey done, and there is some asbestos remaining in the building. There's been some cost estimates received on the demolition and getting rid of the building. And then the idea would be, or what the plan is, is that we put like a splash park up there, which is one of those things that you see where there's like...
They have one in Blair Mill. They have one in Blair Mill.
Okay, okay, they have one in Blair Mill Park. It's like a, it's like a thing that kids play in, it's kind of like a, there's like different types of barns or things that come up and they spray water, and the kids run around it in the summertime. But you don't have to have a lifeguard, it's not expensive like a pool, but it still provides kind of a, you know, outlet for kids to play, and it's kind of, I don't, Lewisburg has one that they built down by their park. Eaton put one in with their new swimming pool, the Bay Bill. So, they're kind of becoming the, you know, the, I guess, recreational water activity in communities because they are a pool, they don't take, you know, chlorine, you don't have to have a lifeguard. You know, there's not really a big insurance factor there because of danger of somebody drowning, you know, it's just not like that. So, that's kind of the idea is that we'd like to put one of those up there to have an attraction for the kids in town. And the other thing had to do with, as we went through the funding process, it seems like just getting money to get rid of the asbestos and tear the building down wasn't very interesting for anybody. You know, it was like, they didn't really want to give us money to just have an empty lot. But if we add something on there that becomes a recreational facility, then the interest peaked because you were actually gonna do something versus just get rid of the building and have an empty lot. So, as time evolved, we kind of changed our focus on, you know, trying to have some type of a development piece there so that when we were done, it wasn't just an empty lot with two shelters, it actually had something else there, which...
What safeguards does the town have in effect as far as anybody, like kids, for instance, getting in that school building and getting hurt?
There's no trespassing signs up in the...
Well, that's what I...
I know, I know that won't stop them, but that protects, that protects...
Does that, I mean, that protects the town?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what Mike was gonna say.
What, just guess? Yeah, citizens' rights. If they're caught on the property.
If you, if, you know, if you have signs there, then that's why they go with it.
I don't think you heard what he said. It's, they're assuming the risk.
You're assuming the risk. If you enter there, there's no trespassing sign.
Right.
You enter it, you can hurt it.
That's what I meant.
You assume the risk of going in this, taking, if you get hurt, it's your fault.
But yes, we'd like, you know, we encourage parents and everybody else to keep their kids away from that building.
Not only have we been trespassing people from the whole facility, the whole grounds, but we've also been critically charging corporations.
That's all I have.
Well, thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Come back again. Susan, you're welcome now. You need a grant to get that building torn down.
I know, I'm a little bit closer. Okay. Committee reports, safety.
Police Department handled 104 calls for service in February, made 22 reports, three arrests, six citations, 13 payments.
Do you have, does everyone have a copy of this analysis?
No, it's in a folder.
Yeah, it's in a folder, so you should have it. I would like you all to take a look at this, we may not discuss it this evening, but we certainly will have to discuss it at our next meeting. Police additional levy, take a look at what each thing would bring in and the increased cost to the homeowners. If you would, please, chalk up that. It's in April.
Do you have anything else here? Bill. Who's on building? Oh, what committee will lose me on? Well, is that made up yet?
Also, and C, so.
We don't know what, well, I know what committee.
I didn't have any, any information about this until late this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
This is happening, so.
We're, we're trying to run the catch-up a little bit. We'll let you know what committee. And yes, we will.
Bill's the only one.
Bill is the only one on the building committee, so we have no report, Bill's not here. Streets.
On the streets, though, we have done some of the patchwork on the potholes, they're not all done, but we have done some of them as was suggested last meeting to do some of the major ones. Yeah, I think a lot of the major ones have already been done. There's a couple of complaints about potholes in the alleys that we're gonna address this week. We are working forward on that as best we can.
Going to Main Street too, because I know that the parties you're gonna have in Main is pretty bad too.
And also, like I said earlier, that the partisan pieces for the new storm sewer will be here Wednesday. Hopefully, they'll start on first of the week if they can to get that. If you may, if you'll let me, I'd like to go to old visitors with some more of that information with Steve if I could.
Sure. You want to just table some things for right now, or you want to do it now?
If, if I could.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. On that, Steve, when you were talking about repairing what's already there damaged in that storm sewer, or the downspouts and sewer lines in the storm sewer that you have, at one time, there was some information that was given to me about running a sleeve through there, doing some repair work. Is that something that you would accept or do?
I would accept it, but I can tell you that would be very expensive to do.
You want the whole thing taken out to what point of your property, if I could?
What I want done is the driveway doesn't have to be escalated. The driveway will stay to the, the existing sidewalks needs to be removed. Expose the concrete tiles underneath there, which can't be more than six inches underneath the slab.
To the garage or? How far back are you looking at that you want the building?
It's almost to the garage, but not quite because the sidewalk tapers. But there's leakies at the point there too, so that the entire sidewalk from the garage to the front yard has to be taken out. That, excavate it down a little bit, that exposes this tile. That's the section of tile that needs to be removed and replaced with an eight inch, according to the engineer.
And block off what's from, from the corner of the building, the house back to the yard? Leave that open or what?
Tie this new piece of tile in to the back and to the front. And the reasoning being is?
The new piece that we're putting in now or a new piece that you would like for it to put in alongside of your house?
At my house, on my property, your line that is broken, regardless of how it got there, it's the village's line. It's damaged, it's leaking. That section between the garage and the yard, not the street, just where my sidewalk is. Sidewalk removed, you expose that twelve inch concrete tile, you remove that, you replace that with an eight inch plastic tight pipe, I don't know what the terminology is. You tie back onto the street side of it, so that, and tie my, you have to give me a pipe up from this pipe that I can tie my downspouts into. The other end of it ties that back into the existing tile that runs on up under the garage into the backyard. The reason for that, just for your information, is the camera can only get a short distance from the back door. My mother tells me that she's ninety-one years old, that neighbors had run tile into that tile. We have no proof of that because we can't get the camera in there. We can't just block off that tile and leave it there and provide me with drains from there on down to the street, because who's to know if there's another tile running into this pipe that's staying in there? Or there's property for sale beyond us. When my father built that house there, he had no knowledge that Lincoln Street would ever be created up there. Who's to say ten years from now, somebody doesn't buy that land up there and they extend Lincoln Street on dam?
The domino effect, they would cause you to lose your drops because it's running through your drops too.
What's the question?
What, what you, what you would want, if the village could do something for you on that aspect to, once we eliminate the volume of water, when we go back and look at the problem, that's the broken tile that's alongside of your house, how far back do you want the village to go in order to buy, lay a new line for you alongside of your house?
From the garage to the grassy front yard.
First of all.
Seventy feet or something.
How many feet?
Sixty, seventy feet.
And, and the part that's existing in the yard now and the part that's existing in the garage?
I don't want you touching that.
Okay.
Either one of them, or the backyard for that matter.
I feel like before we do anything, we may need to maybe come to an agreement on hiring an engineer, maybe sharing the cost or whatever it takes, to find out what the real problem is before we proceed to do anything. I don't know.
I can tell you that it's not the homeowner's fault.
Okay.
It's not this pipe.
Okay. I know there was any selling or anything way back then.
Regardless of how the pipe got there, it's in this area, it's the village's pipe and it's leaking and they need to fix it and give me access to put my downspouts in to run to the street.
Now, if you want to go into a whole bunch of technical stuff as far as where it goes back up in the backyard, the engineer tells me that typically if you abandon a line, you have to crush it. I don't want you up there in my yard doing anything like that. I want to leave that pipe up there because that would allow me as a homeowner, if I needed to at some point, to put a small little catch basin up there and tie it to this pipe. So, what water run off would come down there, go into that, and that eight inch pipe would handle it sufficiently to go on down to the street. All I'm asking the, the village to do is repair the section from the garage to the grass, because not too far along the grass, it goes into a plastic pipe that goes down in a sixty degree angle that goes down to the bottom of the canal. That plastic pipe is pristine, I know there's nothing wrong with it. We're only just talking about ten feet of concrete tile. If you want to tear the whole thing out, then you've got to tear the yard up and everything else. I'm trying to limit this as much as possible cost to anybody. That's why I'm saying, but I, but I don't want it just blocked off at the garage or wherever you want to block it off. I don't know if there's other things that can run in that water or just general groundwater that can perk into that pipe. It needs to remain straight to get through the street.
Okay, that's why I ask on the streets, because that's.
No, that's perfectly, yes, no, that's fine.
Like I say, I'll be gone, but say somebody did develop something up there and they extend Lincoln on dam, which is fine, because the street water would go to this new storm sewer that you're proposing to put in, but there could still conceivably be groundwater run down over that bank down into my property. So, I want that pipes left in there, crushed, to accommodate those situations.
Thanks, Steve, appreciate it.
But to be clear, I'm not asking anybody to tear, cut my driveway and then I finally got blacktopped.
Don't do that again.
And it looks pristine. I want to maintain that and the curb, the curb would stay, it's just the sidewalk that's sunk down and I could have brought pictures or you want me to come down and look at it? Remove that old sidewalk, get it the hell out there and then fix the pipe that's in there and backfill it back up. I mean, I'm not asking anything out of the ordinary. The problem is, is I'm nervous as heck that we could still get another rainstorm, we could still get zero weather out again, freezing and thawing against that concrete block. I've had some hairline cracks in the basement wall that I have pictures of and marked and dated. Eighty percent of them I think were there, but there's twenty percent of them that I think are new. So, I monitor them once a month, take a picture of them to see if they're expanding or anything. Just for your information, your homeowner's insurance says that's not your pipe, it's not your insurance's problem. It's my problem personally, but it's not my homeowner's insurance's problem. Now, if there was a crack in the wall, in the basement wall, and water comes in the basement through that crack and I hadn't repaired it, that's not their fault either.
I appreciate it.
No, I just, that's what you had.
One other thing else, though, just you don't have to tear my old driveway or garage down or anything like that, you're just talking about a short distance aside.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to lights. Does anybody have lights?
I'm lights. How many lights do we have in the cabin?
I don't have a clue.
Look. I would like me to look and see because I don't, I may have missed one. I counted a hundred and twenty-one last night.
Were they all running?
Yes.
Good. Yes, it's kind of hard to find them if they're not lit, isn't it?
Yeah, I have to know how many's in the village, so I'll know if I miss any.
I will find that out.
In that location on our country?
I, I. Eight pound light.
I've never seen a number when I was.
I have not either, but I'm sure that there's a number somewhere.
Well, the eight, the eight pound light gives us, gives us the light, light, eight pound light, that is zero.
I have that one.
Okay, one, okay, the company gives us codes and lights, pictures of them. Somebody has to know. Somebody has to know.
Sure, someone will know, so we'll find that out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Finance, which is me.
Yeah, you.
And Bill, so there's no finance committee, no meeting either anyway, but I do stress that I would like you to take a look at these numbers or these levy proposals, see if anybody thinks that there's a, so we can discuss them at our next meeting.
They will have to be done by April, though, won't they? Are they gonna get it off ballot or not?
No, really, we have some time, because we're not trying to put it on a special election or anything. We'll be doing it in November, but we want to get it right and get it there. And there might be some more questions that we'll have from the auditor's office and things like that, so we'll, we need to really get into this if we can, it's something we want to try to do. All right. Nunciation, Mary Jane.
Okay. I had called Rumpke about porta potties with the activities for up there at the school. And I walked right on, we forgot my paperwork. Anyway, the handicapped, they have handicapped ones and it was a hundred and eighteen dollars for each one. I felt that we need some of the shelters. But then I was contacted by Ellen, who I thought was gonna be here, Ellen Melody?
Oh.
And he talked to me and told me about, I can think of something.
Another, another company that.
No, there's, is it Gully?
Darn it, what's his name?
Talk about the porta potties, I'm thinking about the car show, the fundraising.
Yeah.
They said I need to, to the porta potties.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
There's the one that has, that who the Legion and other people in Applefest got them from because they're the cheapest. Oh, and I want to think, they said seventy dollars a piece.
On the handicap?
But that's just for, I don't know, I, I have got this far.
Well, anyway. Alan has all the, I, I didn't know that Alan had checked on porta potties. Rumpke said that he had and I asked them to send all the information to Alan, because he said he was gonna be here to present that. But he also said that there was a young man, Dwayne.
Gully?
Gully.
Yeah, probably Gully.
Said that he was willing to build two outside restrooms and he has a crew to help him do that. And since Alan's not here, I don't know all the information about that. And he's willing to get on it right away, but he needed water, you know, the, all the piping and everything for the sewage and all, and was gonna ask the water board about that. Has he contacted?
No, he hasn't contacted.
Yeah, he was gonna.
I don't know all the details of that, but the porta, porta, the porta potties, he was checking into some of the organizations to help pay for those.
We're talking about initial costs for the porta potties, then additional cost to keep and maintain them?
The, well, with Rumpke, he was gonna come in and clean them once a week as they done the trash care, but I don't know who's gonna supply, you know, supply the paper or whatever it needs. But that's, I was gonna make a motion for the handicapped stuff there, but without the other information. You know, let's wait and see if everybody's in favor, but why don't we try to get a little more information about the building up there? I mean, I know that either one is gonna cause somebody more work, no matter which way we go, I think. But once they're built and, you know, you have paper in them and if you want to build them instead of maintaining a portable one, I don't know, I'd like to see the cost numbers on both those things, including. Why, no, Rumpke was giving us the cost for the two handicapped ones at a hundred and eighteen dollars a piece because they, that's what they told me. Okay, I mean, I've got that. And, and that is a reduction, I think it was gone, the original cost was like a hundred and eighty-nine dollars a month for one. So.
How much to come in and clean them?
Every week, they be cleaned on Thursdays, that's what they. Is that included in the price? No, that's included in the. So, the hundred and eighteen includes a weekly cleaning? Yes.
A week?
No, a month.
All month.
Wait a minute. How often are they gonna clean the things? A week? Every, every week. And a hundred and eighteen dollars a month is the red. Okay.
And that's for two of them, a hundred and eighteen each or?
Yes, a hundred and eighteen each. One in each shelter, I was thinking, and they also would give us permission to put locks on them, to lock them up, but we had, we would have to set the hours that we wanted them open and closed. And then someone, they can be responsible to both there and opening them and closing them. Which that would happen whether you have portable ones or don't, you know, something that's permanent. So. And with the.
Can we get Gully here and talk about it if we kick them?
Well, I guess I need to call or contact Alan, he emailed me, but.
Yeah, he can get in, because he's family.
Oh. So, I, and maybe he emailed me, I don't know, I haven't checked my email.
Well, he was coming immediately, he didn't say anything about that, he didn't.
Yeah, but he had planned on being here, as far as I know.
But I said he was gonna call tomorrow, so.
Okay, asking. Tell him it's on hold now because I didn't have enough information.
Well, he had said something to me about my mom, if you're gonna have that, you know, what are you gonna do with fundraising? Mary Jane was talking about.
So, when is this going to go on?
I'm just wanting to do something, fundraiser, make money for.
Oh, okay.
And we were talking about all we need, this car show that we put together.
Okay.
Two porta potties, they said.
Yeah.
Started checking on Bryson and Stacy, or Stacy account said seventy dollars is what they got from Brett.
But if, if the Gully wants to do the outside ones, that, we could use that towards some of the grants for our in-kind too. It's all donated, except I don't know about the piping and the. It's all donated, except I don't know about the, the piping and the.
Will you be home tomorrow?
Um, until about twelve-thirty, and then I won't be back until about four.
Okay, that's what, then maybe an hour after twelve or so.
Or then, or maybe, maybe five.
Okay.
I have to go to nail all them tomorrow.
Maybe five, good time.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, you know, that's two hundred and thirty-six dollars a month.
Mm-hmm.
How many months out of the year will you think?
I was thinking May to the end of October after Apple Fest was over.
So April or May through October? No, he's not including April, is, you know, do you have an egg hunt up there? Do you have some things going on up there?
Yeah.
In this, in the early spring, it might be nice to.
Is that April?
Usually it's April, yes.
The, uh, yeah, in Easter.
Yeah, but then, Easter, so we never know exactly when that will be.
And that'll be the first of April. In Easter and, and April fourth on the same day.
Well, he may have to do without anything for this egg hunt. They'll be used to that.
Yeah. Well, we'll discuss it at next meeting.
But yeah, let's, um, so we need six or seven months is what we want paid for these things.
And also Jimmy lifted the tree off of the sidewalk down there by the old flower shop on Sprague Street.
I did see that, did just.
Not there?
Yeah. Matt cleaned up the property, I'm going to.
Okay. Jeremy just said Matt's cleaned the property.
Good.
Good.
About time.
Well, Matt doesn't have a lot of freedom to do that, I think, until just recently.
Right.
Um, anything else, Mary Jane?
Not this time, no.
If you can get a little bit more information together about.
Yeah, I'll get with that one because I turned all of that over to him.
Okay. Try to cost compare and see what would be most cost effective. Okay. There's nothing from the planning board, I don't think. Does BPA have anything to report on?
Not anything, everything's going smoothly down the time holds. Uh, we're getting that hooked up. Also, our, if anybody wants to attend our next, this month's meeting, it's going to be next Tuesday because we have a special announcement for the, for the Black Massacre President, so it won't be Tuesday, December.
What's her date? It's next Tuesday.
Thirteen.
Oh.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
What, what time's your meeting?
Six o'clock.
Resolution and ordinance. I don't have anything. Okay. Unfinished business.
Do we need to elect a new president of the council?
We will, yes.
When?
When we get some more people.
I'm, I'm hoping that we can get Bill here from next week. And I want you to be thinking, if you want to propose a council person, look around for somebody that would like to serve. It's a two-year term.
Who wants to make a council person?
It's the, um.
State?
It would be the term ending in, uh, twenty-nineteen.
What's that?
The term would end for this council person in twenty-nineteen.
Okay.
All right. So, um, you know, you need to find somebody who would, has the best interest of this village at heart and is willing to work with us. And then we will, regardless, if Bill is here at the next meeting, I'm hoping you'll all be here. I think you could elect the council president at that time.
Yes, true.
Like I said, it was just kind of a surprise tonight, so it was kind of scrambled. Um, CCA, which is the, is the central collection agency for our income tax, will be in our office tomorrow. They will be here tomorrow from three to six P.M. for, to help anyone with their tax form and getting it filed. It's a paper, I mean, it's a written thing. They don't do them online. And so I didn't find it to be extremely difficult, really, but they will be here tomorrow from three to six to assist taxpayers. And we have forms here. If you can't, if you don't have your form, bring your W. twos and all your pertinent information from your federal or whatever, and bring it in and we'll look at it. Water board. Do I have an invoice for remote associates? Is this?
The BPA, that's what you have to answer for the public affairs.
Water, yeah. Over here. Oh, of course, this says purchase order. We have our purchase order request form survey and, uh, the easement, survey for the easement for the new storm sewer line there on South Sprague Street coming from behind, I mean, there behind Mr. Davis' house down to Sprague Street. Um, that's no associates, it's two thousand dollars. The motion to pay this, I make a motion that we pay, did you say two thousand dollars? Two thousand. It was for.
The work on.
This survey and preparing easements and everything for the new sewer, storm sewer.
I'll second.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Yes. Here.
All right.
Thanks, Susan. Take care of that, appreciate it.
Yes, in unfinished business, or in new business, our flood insurance is, needs to be renewed. We have, um, two options. The current flood insurance is a hundred and fifty thousand on the building and a hundred thousand on the contents with a deductible on the building of twelve hundred and fifty dollars and the contents of twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Premium for that, a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred, over a hundred thousand, is three thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars. The other option is to raise that building coverage to a hundred and sixty-five thousand, contents to a hundred and five thousand, same deductible, premium option for that would be three thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars. So we've got two hundred and fifty dollars higher. New discussion. Right now, what are, what are my needs last year? Couldn't tell you, like thirty-four, I think, what was it?
Has, has building, I don't know, has building materials went up since the, shall they always go up? Well, yeah, they do, but sometimes it's outrageous and sometimes it's.
Thirty-five oh five.
Thirty-five oh five.
There's not much of an increase on a hundred and fifty thousand. Not too bad.
I make a motion that we go with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, for the building and a one hundred thousand dollars for the contents and a premium of three thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Six, seven, ten? Mary Jane?
Yes.
Hey, yes. Rob?
Here.
Luther?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, a letter from Calhoun Pork Festival, but I really think, I mean, they would like, they're trying to get ideas to get the village more involved in the pork festival countywide. And they want to put, you know, we have these flag posts that the Chamber has where they hang the, the Village for All Seasons. And I believe they have Apple Fest ones, if I'm not mistaken, don't they?
I think so.
Well, they would like to put flags, to buy the flags.
Oh, with the.
Here we would for Pork Festival. But the problem is Pork Festival is one week before Apple Fest.
That's right.
So I think if, you know, we at least would have to check with our Apple Fest people before, you know, we did that.
I don't.
I wouldn't want to, Rob.
I wouldn't want to either.
Not at.
I would ours to promote someone else's. I wouldn't mind putting one somewhere, but not down our whole street.
Well, I think that's the kind of flags they're planning on getting, would be the kind that would go, I don't know if they're planning anything else. They're, you know, they're not, uh.
Unless we put them up.
Why?
I don't know when ours goes up.
I don't know when they do either, but.
Maybe take them down a couple of weeks before they put ours up? I don't know.
Give you permission, I'd like to show this to the current Apple Fest chair and committee and see what they think about it. If, if they can, if they can find.
Come up with a solution.
Yeah. And if not, we'll just have to tell them that we, we do something for them, but we, they can't use the flag sketches on the posts.
Right.
The other thing we have, and I think everybody got this letter from the National Trail, uh, CTC, FFA.
Yes.
Okay, they're having legislative luncheon at Trail on the twenty-third of March. I'd like to know if anyone's available to go to represent us. I have no idea what kind of legislation, but I'm sure it will be interesting.
And I feel that we need, as many that can go should be there. We need to start helping represent the village through other organizations and FFA, the school especially. I think as many, I'll, I'll be willing to go, I'd be willing to go also.
I'd be willing to go, but the mountains are calling me.
Oh, they.
Yeah. I've got a cabin that's calling my name.
I understand that. Hey, would you be in, what way to go?
Again, I don't have my letter.
Try and get a hold of Bill and see if he has any interest in that. What about you, Rob?
I will, too.
Okay.
When is that?
It's the twenty-third. Eleven to one, no, March twenty.
March.
March twenty-third from eleven to one at National Trail.
I've got some through the mail.
Yeah, I did too.
Well, I will talk, I'll see if I can get a hold of Bill or make, or get a hold of him. He's probably going to be working, you know, I would assume that he'll be at work. But the three of us can turn in reservations, and I'll take care of that if you want me to. Okay? I don't think I have any other communications. I will have a copy of the mayor's reservation letter for all of you if you want to hang around a minute on the other room. Um, I.
Are we, are we having an executive session?
I think so. Do you need one? Do we need one?
I'd like to have one.
Okay. I need a motion for you to go into an executive session.
So move. Oh, for what reason, litigation? Yes, I think so. Can you pardon?
Just call legal matters.
Legal matters, okay.
There, we could get a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Rob? I will not be here. Oh. I'd like to get my thanks. Some of us have to.
Hey, Patty, we're going to.
Yeah, why?
We're going to, if they're, will we come back?
And he was willing to, they don't have a, and he's got a person to deliver and he said next meeting.
Do you want me to?
What I'd like to do is.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, I don't know about the, well, I think it's donate.
I don't know. Well, he's out for two months. Well, he has to come here and then she got her. It's, you have all this air.
I can see my cooler.
She's going to be looking again, so she can probably get back.
You know, well, I'm. But that's no trouble. Yeah. I just. I says, I says.
She's.
Oh, she would. When she came down and operated.
Um.
I don't know.
They're killing it.
We had a run of our.
He is sweet. Oh. I'm going to ask him. Raise him. And I said. What are you talking about? She said, there was a person and she had, she called her and said.
Okay. We're going to come back now and then somebody can, then we come out and go in our session.
I make a motion, we come out of.
Wait, you got to start.
It's starting.
Is it starting?
No, it is.
Okay.
It's starting. Okay.
I make a motion, we come out of executive session.
Second.
Mary Jane?
Yeah.
Peggy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes, yes.
Luther? Luther? Is there any further business?
What?
Is there any further business? We've got everything.
Did we, did, uh, did we purchase a new gun for this, for the police?
Apparently we did. There is a certain amount of money that can be spent.
Without us?
With limits, without coming to us and saying.
Got you.
All departments have that.
Okay, what is the price? What's the amount?
The amount, seven hundred, is that correct? Seven hundred dollars? And, um, this was a four hundred dollar purchase of a, what did you tell me it was?
Five, five hundred and fifty-six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Five fifty-six?
Five fifty, five fifty-six, five hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Okay.
Kind of a.
A?
What's the name of it?
It's a patrol rifle.
Patrol rifle. Rifle.
Oh, is it an AR? Well, it's an AR platform, yes. Okay.
What's that name?
Probably fully automatic. No, is it semi-automatic? Semi. AR stands for Armalite. Yeah. Those things.
Okay. So he did buy, Jim did purchase that, um, for the department. Is there anything else?
Not that I know of.
Okay. Um, our next meeting will be in the second, at seven P.M. here. Please try to think of someone who would make a good member of this council. You don't want to sit short. It makes it very difficult for everybody when we do. And, um.
Can we, can we get, uh, let me see. It doesn't have to be somebody from the council.
I beg your pardon?
To become the mayor, it does not have to be one of us from the council.
To become the mayor?
Huh?
No, you can ask anybody.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You, you, the president, the president of the council.
The, the council president is a member of council.
Right.
And we will try to elect, uh, you know, you all can vote for someone. Yes. I'd like to wait till Bill is here, just so we.
I'll catch up. But can we get somebody on the outside, as I understand it?
You can bring someone in from the outside as a member of council.
Oh, right.
Yes, to fill the seats that I may need it.
And then we, if we did that, then we will, uh, pursue the matter of getting, uh, electing a president.
Well, yes, but I think we're going to do it next, at our next meeting regardless. Just in case, you know, I get hit by a bus, it's easier if there's someone in the succession line.
Right.
Set there to go ahead.
Right.
So next meeting, we will try to, we will be electing a council president, you all will. Okay? And if, if we have candidates for the open council seat.
Okay.
I would like to hear about them prior to, maybe we could talk, you know, if somebody knows of someone, we could give the information to everyone prior to, don't you think? So we don't have to just sit in here cold and take the first person that comes along. Or if there are four or five people interested, which probably won't happen, but, you know, we'll have a little time to think about who we like the best or who might make the best, not like, but who would make the best candidate. Okay?
Okay.
So we're meeting on April second. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So move, but call me for that FFA. Remind me.
I will, I will remind you. I'm going to go ahead and make the reservation for the three of us and then, uh, and I'll call Bill, but I'm pretty sure he'll be working, he won't be able to go. But, and then we'll go. Okay?
Okay.
Bye. I'll call you.
Thanks, Jackie. Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
I'll be very valuable to help things.
Would you like to be a council member? Your wife? Or your wife?
I'm trying to talk right now.
Good.
There wouldn't be a conflict if she were a member of the council.
Right, she just recuses itself.
If we had to go on your salary or something, well, I can show her I'll do that. I can.